The Natick Board of Selectmen Meeting for Monday, November 24th, 2014. Before we begin, I would ask those present to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of the men and women of this country serving us in harm's way around the world. Thank you.
I do allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, with freedom, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Cheers.
So it is. Welcome to this Selectmen's Meeting. This is a different meeting than normal. We have scheduled this for the purposes of public interviews for the candidates, the finalists, for the position of Chief of Department for the Natick Fire Department. We have been through a process that began last spring. As provided for in the town bylaws, we had a search committee, a screening committee that was established, went through the process of recruiting, working with a consultant and assessment center, and they presented the names of four finalists to us on October 14th. The Board has had the opportunity to meet with the three current finalists. Unfortunately, one finalist has withdrawn from consideration. Peter Blatche of Staten Island, New York, was extraordinarily well-qualified, and the Board looked forward to meeting with him and having him interview here tonight. Unfortunately, for family medical reasons, Peter has withdrawn from consideration. We offer him and his family all of our good wishes, thank him very much for his application to serve the town of Natick, and wish him and his family good health and long life. So this evening, we have, the three finalists will be with us. We'll start off with Chief Cory Landry, who is Chief in Durham, New Hampshire, and is resident of Dover. We will then have Chief, interim Chief Rick White, and Deputy Chief Mike Lantini, both of the Natick Fire Department. The Board has a list of 10 questions that we will ask, and Board members may have follow-up questions. We have budgeted about an hour, and if we need a little bit more time, we'll certainly take that. And during the course of each interview, the candidates who have not yet been interviewed will be accompanied by members of town staff. We ask Chief Landry, please come have a seat, the seat of honor. We'd just like to acknowledge your family, thank you for visiting Natick, and thank you so much for being here tonight. So just also, so folks understand, we will interview folks tonight, but the Board has scheduled an agenda item for Monday, December 1st. One of the first orders of business, if not the very first, that night, will be for the Board to deliberate and vote on appointing the Chief of Department. So that's where we're at. We'll have a week in between the interviews, this public interview and the final vote. Chief Landry, thank you again so much. Congratulations on being a finalist. I just want to offer you a few words now, and, minutes now and at the end of the interview, if you'd like to make any opening and closing remarks.
Okay, well, thank you for having me. I'm excited still to be here and be involved. Every time I come back to Natick, look around, I fall in love with the town more and more. I don't, do you want me to do background now, or just get into that?
Oh, feel free, yeah, I think that if you, this is on television, if you want to just give a moment to describe, the first question I'll ask you is how your career has prepared you to lead the Natick Fire Department. So if you want to use that-
Okay.
...to describe your qualifications, that's perfectly fine.
Excellent. I've viewed my career since day one as always building, always moving towards bigger and better, learning more every day, expanding my knowledge and expertise in all angles of the fire service. Anything I do, I do the same thing. Any activity I do, I always strive to be perfectionist in it to a point, make sure I know all the angles and can understand it. So what I've done throughout my career, I've always looked for opportunities to take classes. Not only, not only formal degree classes, but I've done that. Matter of fact, I'm just finishing up my master's degree. I'm in my second-to-last class. I should be finished by early spring in the University of New Hampshire in public policy. I hold a bachelor's degree in public safety management. My associate's degree was in criminal justice. My original intent when I went criminal justice, my original expertise in the fire service was fire investigation, arson investigation, so I got more of the legal background at that aspect, and that's what I was working towards at that point. As my career's advanced in the chief level, I focus more on budgets, management styles, you know, managing the fire service, managing the fire scene, away from that angle. I was a certified fire investigator, that, I did let that lapse, probably about six years ago now, after I first took over as chief, it was difficult to keep that up and expand my angles I needed to deal with. I'm a certified, excuse me, I'm a chief fire officer by the National Fire Academy. It's a four-year master's level program they run. You go down there for a two-week class, once a year, and then you have to write a APA-style paper within six months and have that graded. And it's a four-year program. Less than 1% of the country's fire service is allowed into that class and actually continuing and graduating and hold that certificate. So it's not, overall picture, not that many have that certificate. I'm a certified fire protection specialist from the National Fire Protection Association. That's a, that's a certification that, again, is very few in the, in the nation have that. I don't know the percentages, I just know I was one of maybe three or four in the state of New Hampshire at the time. There's no doubt in my mind, the numbers are a little bit greater in Massachusetts, but just to show the numbers on that angle. But that's the way I go about things, is getting expertise in these angles to work better at it. I continually, continually educate myself. One habit of mine is to read management books. When I'm in between classes, I tend to pick up a different management book and read it to pick up little things. I don't necessarily memorize the books to say, hey, on page 19 in chapter whatever, you know, you have to do this in this instance, but it's become second nature to me to pick up the good things in that book. And I've expanded that. The other thing I do, as far as making myself better, is make my officers better underneath me. And I continuously teach them and, and lead them and mold them to be good officers. Like I say, nobody, nobody works in the fire station that, that wants to be there, works for me. They work for the mid-managers. And like in any, any service or any department you work for, if you're not happy working for your boss, you're not happy. So my mid-managers are not having the same focus, the same family, team-oriented focus that I have, that makes it difficult. And I know, I know in Durham, I've done well at that, and the, and the people I've met at Natick, I'm actually excited because they, they seem to lead that already. So I'm excited to come to Natick for that aspect as well. One way I do that, just to touch on it, one way I do that with my officers, is we have staff meetings monthly, and I hold a, what I call the Chief's Book Club. I assign them a book to read, we do so many chapters a month, and we discuss it for a good hour as training, just different angles. So far, we've done a couple of management books. I'm gonna let them pick a book here pretty quick and maybe do something a little different, but, but to be able, so they can teach me at the same time. I'm still not above learning. We're all in there, learn together. But I'm always, I'm always hungry for information. I'm always hungry to get better. I'm always hungry to make it better. I'm always trying to think outside the box. I know it's cliche, but it's, it's true. I'm always, especially when it comes to budgets and managing, I'm always trying to find, what am I missing? I want to see the big picture here and make sure I'm, I'm connecting all the dots, so we can best articulate what we need in the, in the Fire Department. I'm not big on, I get chills on my back when people say a wish list. We never have wish lists, we have needs. And I approach my budget that way, and I give the history that it needs to show that angle on my budget as well. So I've really, I've really gone off on budget's angle aside of it, and my most recent expertise side that I've grown to.
Do Board members have any follow-up questions? Mr. Hughes.
Just for the public, could you tell us, compare the size of Natick to the size of Durham in terms of population, and the kind of work that you get assigned, that the Fire Department does up there? Natick has a huge ambulance service, and so just kind of compare the size of your department, the size of your town, and what kind of-
Okay.
...work the Fire Department does.
The town of Durham right now, we do not operate the ambulances per se, we don't, we don't manage the ambulance as my, my personnel. When I was in the North Hampton Fire, we did. I do have background in running an ambulance service. Yes, it was smaller, but it's still an ambulance service. But currently in Durham, they answer the Fire Department, and I'm in charge of VMS in the town of Durham. Population probably a little bit smaller, we're probably approaching 30,000 when, when the university is in session, we house the University of New Hampshire. The population of the town is about 12,000, you look at the census, population of University of New Hampshire is about 15,000, and then, you know, staff, so it's 28 to 30,000 is our range, daily range. We're operating out of one fire station with, with five personnel on the, on the shift. I have five personnel and staff as well, so we have 10 during the day, and, and I understand that we're 20, Natick has 20, running differently, geographically addresses a lot of that. But when you look at, so call volume, call volume, we're about 2,500 calls a year. I know Natick's about 4,700 runs a year. The call volume, you're busy. Percentage-wise, you're probably about the same, 70, 80%, if not approaching 90 is ambulance calls, and I understand that. University of New Hampshire throws all kinds of challenges at us. There's always something interesting going on in town. I, I deal with more unique situations in Durham than, than a average Fire Department of our same size, from hazardous materials to below-grade issues to high-profile events, presidential candidates, presidents come there on a regular basis. Concerts, good, large-sized concerts, large-sized sporting events, the hockey arena, the football stadium itself, not Foxborough-style events, but large-style events, that we're always managing something. It's always unique, every day, it's kind of interesting, there's always something going on at university. So on those aspects, I feel I'm well-rounded to handle all the emergencies that are going to be thrown at me. I've had them thrown at me. The other angle is that I work in a mutual aid community of 43 communities. Realistically, I work in a mutual aid community of probably eight communities that we work regularly with. We're either there or they're in our town. And it's not unheard of, the way we work with the Seacoast Fire Chiefs, that I will be in another town or city, and I'll end up in a management position, if not, there's been times I've been the incident commander in another city. But I'll definitely get incident command responsibilities. So call volume is increased in that aspect and on the fire scenes. It's the way we operate, because we're all small up there in small communities. I look for that help when they come to my community, and they, they look for that help when I go there. I'm probably getting a little, probably getting a little selfish lately, is I used to walk up to command and say, what do you need? Now I walk up to command and say, you need somebody inside, don't you? Because I miss going in, but, you know, so there's still times I get to get in. But, but I'm always running. There's always something going on, and I got experience running multiple alarm, I lost count of the multiple alarm fires that I've been able, that I've run, I've been an extreme part of. We're busy when it comes to all that.
The next question is, what challenges do you see for the Natick Fire Department in the coming years, and how are your skills and experience suited to these challenges?
Okay. There's obviously a budget challenge, there's an overtime question, there's a manning the ambulance challenge, it all, all rolls into that. So that's the first one, is probably the analysis of the overtime being spent, what can be done to possibly reduce that, or streamline that, or cap that, or sometimes, I know the perception is sometimes stop the bleed. I'm not sure that's what it is, I need, I would need to come in and analyze that. Look at the options on reducing that, are there putting more manpower on shift, if that reduces the overtime, if it pays off enough to reduce the overtime? We talked, a couple of us had talked about 10% of the ambulance calls, you need a second ambulance. So my question was, and needs to be looked at and found out, is of that 10%, how many times do you use a mutual aid ambulance to do that transport? There's a revenue number there, so are you losing that, those numbers? Are we gonna gain that by putting somebody else on shift? Can that help offset the overtime and help offset the cost of hiring somebody? I know, and when I looked at hiring somebody, we looked at the entire cost. It's not just the payroll. I understand the entire package, the retirement, the health insurance, all the insurances. So all those numbers, I figure into it, and I, and I, I'll brag, I'm good at figuring numbers, I'm good at looking at that, and I see the big pictures. I've done that a lot, I do that constantly. I'd say that's one of my strengths, you talk to, my boss now, he talks to anybody that works for me, either current budget or projected budgets, I usually, I usually get my finger right on that, on that pretty good. The other challenge this Fire Department's on the verge of getting to is technology. They have, they have one iPad, maybe two iPads on the floor, I know for sure they have one. You know, they're, they're on the verge, they're on top of that hill, they need to be pushed over the top to bring in some more technology, where the responding units can have pre-plans, can have inspection programs, can have hazardous materials responses, hydrants, vast amounts of information at their fingertips. And they're right there, they're, they're on the verge of being there. I've just, I just pushed Durham over that hump. We just got over the hump, but I understand, I know the road plan, I know the map, so we can get there. Durham, Durham, we're struggling a little bit, the budgets, we're in budget session right now, and one thing they're looking to cut back on is slowing that down a little bit, and I understand that, but, but I know the roadmap, and I'm, and we're getting there. The other aspect I know some of the firefighters are looking for is, is training, specifically the high-rise buildings you're talking about, you've got a section of town, you're starting to get some high-rise buildings. The word I'm getting, I've talked to some people, it's not, it's not that's a major thing, but I've talked to some people, and they'd like to see some high-rise training, and that hasn't come around yet. Doesn't mean I'm not looking at it, I'm not trying to downgrade anybody, but I understand that's, that's something easy to look at. I deal with several high-rises, the university has several high-rises in town, so I've got experience having high-rise fires, I got experiences back as a firefighter, being hired, going from high-rise fires. The code, the code you need for them, and just the training aspect of the fire service, and how it's changed since 9/11. High-rise fires, I fought differently since then, and I understand that, and I've had, you know, I've looked, done a lot of research on those aspects. Those are the big issues I see, I see facing Natick right now.
Any follow-up questions by Board members? Then moving on, just in brief, what do you think the strongest assets are of the Natick Fire Department?
Personnel. You have some great people, and you have some great, you have outstanding people, you have some great equipment. Everybody I've talked to has been, been outstanding. They, they remind me so much of my firefighters in Durham. I don't say my firefighters much, but I'm proud of them, and they, they, I can't articulate how happy I was. I don't know what I was expecting when I walked in, but sometimes you go into stations, I visit a few of them, and you don't get that welcome, you know, they, they have a lot going on, and I did not get that feeling, any station I stopped in at Natick, they're outstanding. So you've got 90% of it going for you already, you have great people working for you. This town's done great keeping them up on equipment, the equipment's outstanding. Need to look a little deeper, I mean, I need to look a little bit deeper on the equipment, on the long-term plans of it, and some of the auxiliary stuff, but the frontline stuff seems to be great, it is, it is great. I know they just put a new engine in service, at Station 2, I believe it is. And it's just, it's just great when a town supports their Fire Department, and I can see that. And the Fire Department speaks greatly of this town, the firefighters do. There's no, there's no ill will, there's no us against them, there's, no, we get along great, no, we do this, we do that, and I love hearing that. And you don't get that everywhere. So I think, I think your personality is right there.
Great. Okay, next. What changes would you prioritize for the department, such as apparatus, staffing, leadership structure, budgeting?
Budgeting would be my first one to approach, because that's, that's, that's my thing, and I want to make sure you're getting all the information you can get from the budget. I want to make sure the budget's being analyzed properly historically. When I say properly, my properly, I know there's different ways to do it. I do budget historically, I look back three to five years on how the department spent money, and what they spent on those three to five years, and analyze that, where we're going from there out. Overtime's an excellent way to do that, we, we compare it to what's available and to what's used historically, and then you come up to the overtime number. And then, that's more manageable number and more reasonable number, you can, you can articulate it better. So budget's the first thing I'd, I'd look at, and most likely do some changes more administratively. Beyond that, I'm gonna do a lot of analyzing. I mean, I'm gonna, I'll walk in the door and I'll assure everybody, I'm not gonna make any operational changes unless there's a major safety issue, any minor changes for six months. Any major changes, it's a year. First of all, I need to, I need to analyze what's going on and understand what's going on. And not that I'm gonna sit back not doing anything, but it's, I also want to, these people that have time, the firefighters, to have time to show me what they do and why they do it. I've been fighting fires, running an ambulance here for years, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna come in and change everything, nor do I need to. But I might, might need some changes, and we'll, we'll look at it, we'll talk, and there'll be a team effort. And, and I don't know if that's a change, because I'm not in Natick, if, if the team approach is, is different, and I don't think, I don't think it is, it seems like they're well-informed, but the team approach to all this, we all, we all have to be on the same page and have the same outcome, and the same desire, the same end goal. And so I need to, my, I guess my biggest thing is to articulate what that end goal is, and we need to mold that when I first get there. Something the start of a strategic plan would be, would be an angle to that, not, not a specific strategic plan with the whole outline and the dates, but the start of a strategic plan, without calling it a strategic plan, is really what you do. And you get feedback, start meeting with people. And my goal would be to meet as many people as I can and have one-on-ones as many people as I can, to get a feel for everything. If there's some major changes, if, if, if I am directed by this Board, that there's gonna be certain changes, then we'll look at that quicker and analyze it, make changes that need to get done. If the department comes to me and has that big push for some change, then fine, you know, we'll analyze it, then we can look at the change that need to be done. I wouldn't necessarily be strong on the six-year mark, that's, that's, that's an assurance that I'm not gonna come in and rock their world, I guess you wanna say, you know, and upset them, make any changes like that.
Yep. So the next question, if Board members have a follow-up, just, just raise your hand. Good. So how, speaking of strategic planning, how can the Fire Department and the community benefit from strategic planning in the Fire Department?
Because what's great about strategic plan, if it's done properly by a strategic plan outline, and I've taken classes in strategic planning, I'm taking a, one of my college classes on it, I've had a long semester, but that's okay. If it's done right, it's the true team approach. You have community members involved, you have elected officials involved, you have other departments involved, and you have your department involved. And, and if it's truly done openly, which I approach everything with, you can hear, you need to hear what everybody's saying, you can, you're gonna broach, you can broach it better and come up with a better strategic plan that gives a great direction to the department. When I hesitate and talk about that, is I see strategic, I've seen strategic plans out there that are truly that wish list that we talk about, and they're unrealistic, they don't meet the town's true, true goals or true picture. And so you gotta keep that in focus, that's why the town elected agencies have to be involved, elected officials have to be involved. If the Fire Department came out with a strategic plan that said, hey, we need eight stations in the next four years, is that realistic? No. But I've seen strategic plans that almost like that, and then, and then it's deflating to the, to the firefighters. If they're led to believe that this is the plan, this is what we need, and led, led to believe that's what is allowed, it deflates them. So it's gotta be realistic, and that's everybody being involved. And that's as well, in, in talking to firefighters, I think they are well-involved as far as eyes open, I think they understand this community. And yes, there's always unrealistic expectations, and sometimes I gotta catch myself, we're all human, you know, but, but sit back and open your eyes and look outside the fire station is one thing I encourage all the time, and be part of the, the team, and that part of the team is the entire town. I work with that constantly, that the Fire Department's a piece of the pie, and we have to fit into the big plan. Again, I'm not preaching that, because I've heard anybody here say that, I've talked that all the time, you talk to my current administrator, and no doubt, I approach our budgets that way all the time.
What makes a Fire Chief successful?
Their people, and keeping them involved, and keeping them, stand humble, and realizing what you have below, and knowing and respecting what they're doing. If the day I lose sight, the day I point to my chest and say, because I'm the chief, I've lost it, I've never done that, never pointed to my badge, and I never even introduced myself as the chief. Probably my wife, she can back me up, I can leave the room, she'll tell the truth. But you meet me outside, you, you meet me outside here and you ask what I do for work, and if I'm not in uniform, I tell you Durham Fire Department. And I, it's usually left at that, very rarely if you was, oh, you're an officer, or you, and then, then I'll say, okay, you know, and then we'll talk more. But I'm not the flag bearer, because it's not me, we're, we're a family. Right now, I'm part of the Durham Fire Department family, and I'll do anything for everybody in that department, and they're, and I feel they're gonna do the same thing for me, because I've led that way, and I show them that every day. We've had, we've had a couple of issues this week alone, there were, there were pretty high, high-stress issues with the unions and miscommunications, and we pulled everybody in a room. I've had more meetings in the last week with individuals to hash stuff out, and we leave the room going, all we need to do is talk. And in that realization, we've, we've overcome a lot in a week. It was pretty stressful there last Tuesday, and it's very jubilant today. It's just opening up, I'm, I'm always, I say my doors are always open, but they don't always come in, so I, I actually pulled them in, and, and it was great, you know, we had a, we had an issue yesterday on shift, we, we had a problem, can't get into the details, but anyway, one of my first call, phone calls was the union president. You know, once I got everything was going, I go, listen, this was going on, this is what needs to happen, this was going on. So they came in, they did their representative station, and everything worked out today, and in the end, everything's good. It could have been, it could have been a bad situation, it could have been long-term leave situations, but we got the right information, it all got hashed out, and in the end, they were like, they thanked me for operating the way I did, you know, and it didn't hinder anything, didn't hinder our investigation, didn't hinder any outcome, and everybody felt and everybody did were involved. That needed to be. And it, it was great, it was, it was teamwork from the get-go, and if I, they, by doing that shows I trust them, and, and with that, they trust me, and that goes a long ways.
Thank you. Could you describe a difficult decision that you've made as a leader, and how you came to the decision?
Well, one of the worst, one of the hardest, one of the worst things I've had to do was, was fire a friend of mine. But when I tell you that, if I, if I, but the details of it, in the end, I had no choice. It was still tough to do, but it was, it was a criminal issue, and at the time, you know, it was a slam door, slam, you know, slam the door, it was easy. Not easy as far as me personally, it was as easy as far as, well, of course you gotta fire him for that, this is, you know, he did this. The sad part is, two months later, he was found not guilty, it all went away, but he still had lost his job, but it was the difficulty of the Garrity reading and lawyers being involved, and lawyers not allowing him to answer after the Garrity writes. And, and we gave him multiple chances, probably more than, you know, I gave him probably two or three times at Garrity, and the lawyer tied his hand, so I had no choice, I had to let him go. It was still, it was still very difficult. He was the, I tell you, Jamie's sitting behind me, Jamie's 22-years-old. This gentleman was the first one to the hospital after, after we had Jamie the next morning. I mean, that's how long ago we've been, we worked together on shift, he was a friend of mine, he's still a friend of mine. Went through a little rough path there for a while, but we, we've talked since. I don't wanna call it business is business, because we are family, but there's times that they, that your hands are tied, and you gotta do what's right for the department, you gotta do what's right for the community, and that's, my people are number one every day, I wanna make sure they're protected, they're safe, they're as happy as they can be, I know everybody's not happy every day. But in the end, if one of them breaks that trust, and that's what it is, I have to make sure the town, the department, and everybody else, and everybody else in the department is, is put above that. And that's what it was, and that's what it came to. Yes, he was a family member, but he, he put himself, he took himself out of that picture and put everybody else at risk. So I had to, so I locked it down and kept everybody else safe, based on the way I look at it.
Thank you. For how long would you seek to remain Chief of the Natick Fire Department if you were appointed to the position?
I envision eight to 10-year range right now. That doesn't mean it won't be longer, you know, I, you know, I talked to, I talked to my wife about moving down, said, we gotta move. Matter of fact, I was laying in bed last night going, thinking of all our stuff, going, oh, gotta move, you know? So I'm not sure, eight to 10 years could be, it could be, could go by very quickly, and I might just stay longer, because I don't wanna move again. The only reason I'm looking on that aspect is I'm back, I'm going to my eighth year back in, going to my ninth year back in Durham. Right, six, seven, eight, yeah, going to my ninth year, back in Durham. I'd spent two years there before. New Hampshire Fire Service is smaller, so you look at my resume, I did move around a little bit. In order to move up, you gotta move around, this, I can go over every step and why I left where, we can go over that if you want, I've done that with a couple people, but anyway. I would not be looking to leave Durham if I wasn't, I'm eligible to retire from the state of New Hampshire. I'm not looking all over the place. I didn't apply anywhere else. I applied once down to Florida, that, that went away, which I don't think I could have done to move to Florida yet. But I've had other people call me about different jobs down in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Connecticut, and I cursory looked at them and said, no, no, it's not the right fit. I'm, Natick, I think Natick gave it the first look, I looked, no, and I came back the next I came back the next day, I looked at it again, and it just, it just clicked to me. And, and as I came down here and spent time here, it reminds me so much of where I grew up in Dover. There's, it's almost like a sister city. There's so much about this city that's the same in Dover that excites me. So, it seemed like a good fit. It's, it's, I, I believe it would be a great fit for me and my family. My son's excited about the high school. Um, we went over there and took a look, and he, as long as I have lacrosse, he's excited. So, so we're looking at that. And every time I come down here, I've come down here several times now, looked around, looked at real estate, looked at just the area, reminds me so much of Dover, I just feel more comfortable here each time. So, I, I moved up. I'm, you know, if I come, especially if I come here, I'm, I'm the chief, I can expand on that. We've got a great-sized department, there's, there's so much to do. I've been back in Durham going on, you know, finishing eight years now. It went by fast, in the blink of an eye, and I'm like, wow. And, and again, the only reason I'm thinking about is, is I could retire. So, eight to 10 years in, in, in Natick is, is going to be done easily. I don't have any thought of going anywhere.
Could you describe your view of the management-labor relationship in the fire department?
Again, just like I said before, it has to be teamwork, it has to be a daily occurrence, especially as you get bigger. I say daily, weekly occurrence. I, I should be talking to the union officers, at least one of them, on a weekly basis at a department this size, just to make sure we're on the same page, that there's nothing brewing, nothing going on on either side that can get out of hand. And I spoke of the situation last week in Durham that got stressful. I think we're smaller, so I, I, we miss that, we don't talk every week, because the way the shifts work, and I think some stuff got brewing that, that shouldn't have got brewing, and, and it probably went a week too long. And so, you have to head that stuff off. So, I learned a big lesson last week. We got it straightened out, but I, I make it a point to talk to them more often, and that's, that's the key, is, is the open door, the phone call, calling them, saying, hey, this was going on, what do you think? Even if there's nothing going on, if, if, if Thursday afternoon, Friday morning rolls around, and I haven't talked to a union official all week, and I don't want to necessarily go home fat, dumb, and happy that night, I don't want to drop, drop a dime and go, how you doing this week? What's going on? Anything I need to know about? I say drop a dime. See them at the station, if that's the station, go to their station. Make it a point. Be seen and be around. I want, I'm going, my goal is be in the stations all the time, not just the central station, be around the other stations. I want everybody to, to recognize me and know me, and I want to recognize everybody and know them. I want them to see me in the grocery store and be able to recognize me, and, and feel free they can talk to me. Walk by my house and stop and talk. I get that now. I'm, I'm big on artificial separations, and, um, I was just explaining to my family about the station, and I understand it's, it's not that old, but the, the, one thing that worries me about this, the design of this station, you might, none of you probably even thought about this, is what I see as artificial separation. You go by the, you walk in the front hall, office, then you run, walk down the hallway to the back training room of, of MAE, and there's a hall, a glass wall between administration and this hallway. So, there's a separation. So, you can walk by him and not talk to anybody. You know, if he's the door shut, it's just, it's just, it's like, stay out, we don't want you. And, and I don't like those separations. Those, those need to be open, those need to be more formidable. Um, I'm designing, I've been trying to design a new fire station for Durham, and I refuse to put a coffee nook in the administration. I say, no, we're going to go out back to the same kitchen everybody else goes to, to keep that, that teamwork approach, that, that labor, uh, management, um, relationship. I don't wear white shirts. We haven't worn white shirts in five years in Durham now, administration. I wear them to the council meetings, I wear them when I have to present the budget. I wear them once in a while at the stations, just to, you know, people, why is he wearing whites? Just to heighten people up, which is okay, too. But I hardly ever wear my white shirts, because I saw, when you walked in the kitchen, you could see and feel the tenseness. Ooh, white shirts here, you know, and... So, I started wearing dark blue, and it just went away. Yeah, they still know you're the chief, and they're still a little tense, especially the newer, newer firefighters, but it's not like it was. And, and I don't think it was, they all knew me, I'd been there a couple, number of years at that point, so it's not like I've been there longer. Um, I think there's a psychological aspect to that. It's the badge, it's the white shirt, and you wear it when you need it. And, um, I think that's, I think that's brought us in to be more, more team members and, and accept it. We all wear the same color shirt. No different than the military. Military wears the different colored shirts when they go to Capitol Hill or something like that. And that's kind of what I based it off from.
So, how would people describe you as Natick Fire Chief if, if you were appointed to that position?
Passionate, um, drive, you know, I got drive, I'm going to have passion, I'm going to be... I don't think it's particular words, you know, um... Early on, you'd probably call me a workaholic, because what I can see happening is I'm going to spend long days, just like when I took over first in Durham Fire Department, I was doing 10, 12-hour days, there's so much to, to, for me to soak in, and understand, and read, and get to know. So, I'm, I'm going to be there a lot, especially early on, if I, you know, if I'm going to be traveling. Um, my first, my first thing is to get, get a place down here, condominium or something, travel every night until we sell the house and move down. So, there'll be some nights I'm here, so, I'd be at work, get, get stuff done. I get more done at night than I do in a day. But I'm, I'm passionate, knowledgeable, and, um, confident. And I, and, and people, people are confident with me. I've gotten that from several people, from police officers to counselors, but I like when a police officer tells me, I like when you pull up, I know everything's going to be okay. You know, it seems going nuts, they see me pull up, okay, everything's going to be okay. Okay, I'm, I'm pulling up with this mask going, wow, how are we going to do this, you know, but they feel confident, and it works out. So, I, I show that confidence, and, um, I think it's great.
Do board members have any follow-up questions on this or anything else that we've asked?
What do you see as the primary responsibilities of a fire chief in a department of the size of Natick?
Again, initially, every day, it's my personnel. Second, it's my citizens. Third, and very close, is the budget. And, uh, and I understand that. I know, I understand, a lot of people can look back and think the budget's, you know, my number-one job, and it, it doesn't even get the most, it actually doesn't get the most attention. The things that get the most attention are my personnel and citizens, and the budget's just, is a, um, side effect of that, because the budget is what you need for your personnel, what you need to provide the service to the citizens, to the expectation they set out. And one of my priorities with my personnel is getting them to understand what I, what I deemed operational capacity. Operating to the point that the town wants. The town budgets a certain amount of, amount of money, and they, they, they say, there's one ambulance, with, with, and we drop an engine, drop a guy off an engine to, to grab an ambulance, and the second engine goes. The town decided that's the amount of money they want to spend, that's the service they want. If we propose to increase that service by adding another firefighter, let's say, the town can say yes or no to that. If the town says no, we're going to stay operating the way we are, it's, okay, deep breath. People in the service industry, not just fire, but we want to provide service, want to do better. They always want to do the best they can, and they get upset at those situations. And it's just taking a deep breath and recognizing your operation capacity and operating within that. And the other reason I push that is safety. Firefighters, and I know police officers do the same thing, they do more with less all the time. And, and unfortunately, there's times we push that envelope too much, and that's when people get hurt. Um, that's when equipment gets broken, that's when, that's when things happen. And recognize your operating capacity and stepping back. It's that, it's that burning building where you know nobody's in it. You do not need to do an interior attack if you only have two people there, two firefighters. Relax, get some water on it, but no need to go in. You know, weigh that out, and, um, and, and operate within your operating capacity. It's, it's, I preach it all the time. It's, it's worked great in Durham for guys to realize, yeah, if we have a med call going, I only have five people on duty. So, if I get a medical call going on, now we get a fire, we're pulling one engine. You know, I don't, I don't expect those guys to go inside that building. It doesn't make sense. And, um, and they're getting it, and they're understanding that, and it's helped the atmosphere. But that's managing personnel and, and having them understand and be part of the town, be part of the community. Again, I don't think there's going to take much work in Natick from what I've talked to these people, they understand. But just, the, it was just an example, if, if the town picks and chooses. So, that's managing people, that's managing for the citizens and the citizens. That's the top three I have to do all the time, and that handles all three of them.
Thank you. If, um, no other board members have any questions for Chief Landry, then why don't I give you as much time as you'd like to, well, no more than 15 minutes? Just to conclude, and anything else you'd like to share with the board or the community?
Okay. Um, again, I, I thank you for having me, and, and yes, I, my wife, we're planning our 25th anniversary next summer, and my two sons came, Joshua and James, with me tonight, so I appreciate you welcoming them. Jamie's first time to Natick with me, but Josh, Josh and Laurie's come down once, we're new before. But I, I appreciate your time, I'm excited, I'm still excited for this community, I, I am. I'm excited for this opportunity. I'm, I'm excited for a community that's so proud of themselves. I mean, people, people are proud, I, I see it, I hear it. People are proud of being from Natick, people are proud of their parents are from Natick and that their grandparents are from Natick. It's outstanding. I, I'm excited to be part of that community. And I'm going to, I'm going to show that, I, I'm kind of moving, my first intention is to get to the community as far as I, as fast as I can, be part of this community, my entire family, be in this community, and, and, and become part of Natick. And, all are option for me, this, 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 the only way to handle it. I know that I'm not required to live in the, in the community, but it's not even an option, and I wouldn't even look outside. There's no need. I know you look now, you look now, I live in Dover, I grew up in Dover, and I'm not living in Durham. I was living in Dover before I got the Durham job, so it's just, it's just the way it happened, and, and the real estate just didn't work. A few years ago, the real estate market was crazy, so it just didn't happen. But it'd be different down here, my son would be in Natick High School, and the move would be right to there. I'm, I'm, I'm open, I'm, I'm wide open, I'm, I, I operate the fire department as, as an open door, as, as open as possible. I'll answer any questions, I'm not above reproach on anything. I won't get excited for any, I won't get excited or upset over any, any questions asked to me. I'll produce the answers, and, and it is what it is, I have nothing to hide. It's the way we operate, and there's no other way to do it. I present the budget, historically, I, I, I put a lot of time into my budget process. And, you know, so if you're looking, looking for that, that budget guy, you're looking to expand that budget side of it, and that personnel management side of it, you know, that, I'm, I'm the guy you need, I'm, I'm who you want. I understand the deputy fire chiefs in this department run the fires, I understand that most, you know, most of the time, unless something's really, um, really horrific or huge, and they need help on different aspects, I understand that. I have no problem letting that happen. I have vast experience running fires, and that's one thing I have to step back from a little bit, but it's, it's okay. There's enough other stuff to do. But as far as my, I was expanding my background, I think I'm excellent at that aspect of it as well. But I'm an excellent personnel manager, and, um, and the bigger department, the more you need it, I feel.
Thank you so much for the honor of applying to the town of Natick and congratulate you on being a finalist. It's been a pleasure to meet you. I know all board members have had the opportunity to sit down with you in person, I'm glad the community gets a look at you tonight. And as I say, the board will deliberate on the first, I anticipate we'll make a decision then, but, you know, the board will do its will, and, and will sort things out.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Public way, so, thank you again.
I appreciate your time, and, uh, you know, and I, kudos for the process. It's, it shows a lot when you, when you respect the position as much as that, to put it in a process like this. You recognize positions at, at that professional level, so I appreciate that as well.
Could I ask one thing, Mr. Chair?
Sure, go right in.
Could you provide a list of references?
Sure.
You made mention of it in your letter, and...
Sure.
If you have an opportunity...
Right here.
Thank you.
Is that quick enough turnaround?
It's a quick enough turnaround. Be prepared.
Just have two copies.
I'll just make a copies here.
Two copies, please. There you go.
Great. Great. All right. Good. Okay.
We're good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your, for your, your...
Getting that.
Chief.
Chief. Welcome, chief.
Congratulations on being one of the finalists for chief of department.
Thank you.
So, we've got 10 questions we'll ask you to answer over the next hour, and we need more time, we'll, we'll take it. I'll ask the questions, board members may have follow-up. We just start off giving you an opportunity to make any introductory remarks, and then also have some closing remarks, so if there's anything you wanted to elaborate on that you didn't feel like you weren't asked, it does, opportunity to, to do that.
Okay.
But I congratulate you again on being one of the board's finalists, and as I mentioned to Chief Landry, the expectation is that we'll have a vote on December 1st.
Okay, thank you.
It's on the agenda, and we'll just see where we go from there.
Okay.
Okay. So, who's yours?
Well, I was born and raised in Natick. My parents were also, so I'm second generation, graduated from Natick High School. Just very honored to be in this position. I love serving the town in Natick. I've been a firefighter for, this is, I'm in my 29th year, and, um, I'm just happy to serve the citizens in Natick, and I would truly love to, uh, in my career, leading my department to the future.
So, our first question is, how has your career prepared you to lead the fire department?
Well, I, um, I went up the ranks through the, you know, starting off as a lieutenant. I was promoted early in my career. I'd only been on the department a couple of years, I got promoted to lieutenant. And then, uh, shortly after that, about, I think it was seven years later, it was, uh, was to captain, and then deputy chief, um, when I was on the department, 16 years, I became a deputy chief. And, and through that, throughout that time, um, from being a company officer to being the captain on a piece where I was in charge of the, you know, all four, um, all four shifts on that piece, and then as a deputy chief, administrative deputy first, in charge of the EMS and the ambulance, ambulance and the EMS, uh, side of the fire service, the paramedic, um, paramedic program, and then, um, a shift deputy, which puts me in charge of 20 people on a daily basis. I stay, I mean, I'm on the same shift, so it's the same 20 people, but, um, but I am the incident commander during that time. I'm also the, um, the go-to guy if there's problems within the shift. I'm the last star before it goes to the chief. So, I think in that time, uh, you know, through, on-the-job experience, and also, um, courses and, and, and other life experiences, um, I think that's what, during my career, that's what I feel has given me the opportunity to, to do a good job with the, as, as the chief. I also, um, was the union president for a couple of years. I, um, I actually was a union guy for, you know, for the, for the first 16 years. Once I became deputy, we were out of the union, but, um, in that time, I learned how to bargain, um, working with the, uh, working for the, you know, men and women of, of local 1707. I bargained many, many contracts. I was on the bargaining team for probably 27 of my 29 years. many, many contracts. I was on the bargaining team for probably 27 of my 29 years. And prior to my time on the fire service, I was, I went to engineering school, I was in marine engineering. I earned my third assistant engineer's license, which is comparable to, I think, an Ensign in the Navy, but at that time, even in my training period when I was a cadet onboard ship, training under the chief engineer, I was in charge of the non, the, excuse me, the, the non-commissioned, that's not the right word, I'm trying to think of the right word, the unlicensed, excuse me, the unlicensed personnel who worked in the engine room, I was in charge of them and had to work with them side by side, kind of like a working foreman. And in that capacity, you know, as a young man, I learned how to work with people, even though I was in a, you know, I was in a supervisory role. So, I think my, my career has been pretty diverse and I think that I've more on-the-job training than anything else than, and just learned how to deal with people and the public that way.
Thank you. What challenges do you see for the Natick Fire Department in the coming years, and how are your skills and experience suited to those challenges?
Well, all the challenges, there were, I think the main challenges immediately in front of us are how to, how to convince the administration of the town for my piece of the pie for my department to do my job for the citizens of Natick. I think that's, that's every department head's major, probably obstacle. And I think the fact that I have diversity and the fact that I can work with people, excuse me, and I've worked well with the department heads, other department heads in this last 17 months, that I see that, that is one, you know, one major challenge is that, you know, we all have to try and maintain what we, what we are, what we are given to work with, but also we have to understand that the, there are times when the town's under constraints, we have to probably do, do more with a little less. That's probably the hardest thing. Also, I see challenges in the department as far as technology goes. I truly believe that we need to, we need to advance, I gotta advance the department with, with more technology. I just had a deputies' meeting two weeks ago and the deputies all like to get into the, get computers on the, maybe tablets, computers, tablets, I'm not sure yet, but we actually need, we need more technology for the deputies in car too, and also the engine companies, so that when they pull up to a building, they can pull up the blueprint of the building or find out if there's any hazards in there that from, in-service inspections, which is something that we have to start doing again. The problem with the in-service inspections wasn't the inspections themselves as much as, there was no way to, to capture the, to capture the information. I mean, the program we, that we have now, you can input it, but you can't retrieve it that, that well. There's no, there's no real way to get it, get the feedback after you've done the work. So, I mean, that's, that all has to be addressed and, and I see that as a, as a major focus of mine for immediately and in the next couple of years.
What are the strongest assets of the Natick Fire Department?
What are the strongest assets of the department?
Yes.
It's personnel. There's, there's a great group of people across the street that day in and day out go out in the street and do a fantastic job. The men and women are dedicated, professional. I couldn't be prouder of them. They, they've never let the public suffer, even in times when we were in turmoil due to factors beyond our control. They still went out, did their job, day in and day out, no matter what was going on internally in the firehouse, they never took it out in the street, even though it may have been a pretty, you know, touchy situation back at headquarters or back in their stations. They never, they never took it to the public. The public never suffered because of anything that was going on. They, they just continue to amaze me and make me proud day in and day out, on a, on a daily basis, just doing their job.
The next question is, what changes would you prioritize for the department, such as apparatus, staffing, and leadership structure and budgeting? Definitely not the making the chief proud part.
Well, I mean, if I, if I could change staffing, I would like to convince the town to increase my staffing. I know that's a very hard thing to do, but staffing-wise right now, with 20-man shifts and contractually four people allowed to be out on vacation or personal health days, which are contractually allowed leave, if the maximum is allowed out, I mean, excuse me, if the maximum is used each day, I'd be, I'd be at overtime every single day. Because the minimum is 17 and if four people are allowed out, I think if I could get to 21 with four people out, I still wouldn't be at overtime. But I understand that's a budgetary problem that if I raise, if I hire four more people than I, than I already have, that there's issues there too with salary and, and the benefit package. So, I mean, I know it'd be a very hard sell, but, I mean, it's one, one answer to the budget and overtime problem. Equipment-wise, I just, we just purchased a brand-new engine. We're in the process of purchasing a new ambulance. That's just, the committee is just now working on the ambulance. The engine was delivered two weeks, three weeks ago. It's not in service yet, but there's a few bugs that, it's still under warranty. I mean, it's brand-new, it hasn't been on the road yet, so other than training on it, we're gonna send it back just to get the, you know, the little checklist taken care of it, little minor things. So, I don't want to put it in service until it's 100%. Equipment-wise, we're, you know, we've, we're in pretty good shape with equipment. I'm pretty pleased. But just last week, we had our SCBA bottles, our Scott bottles, our rear tanks, had to be hydro-tested. They're hydro-tested every five years, so they were just done last week, and this is the last time they can be done. So, I got five more years and they're gonna have to be replaced. That along with the actual packs themselves, the regulator and the harness that holds it, those are, those are two generations now old, so trying to find parts to repair, replace them and repair them, excuse me, it's, it's getting harder and harder. So, in the next few years, I mean, in five years, they have to be replaced. So, in the next few years, I'd like to look into, work in either work in a program where we can budget for, for that major expense, but also I'm gonna try to, you know, get a grant to take care of that. That's one of the items that we may be able to hopefully be taking care of by a grant, if possible. I mean, I'm really actually working on that right now, I'm looking into that. So, even if I don't get the grant this year, I'll continue to apply for it and tweak it until hopefully I get it within the next few years.
Sure, sorry, go ahead.
Chief, we, we've gotten into the habit of always hiring paramedics so that we can staff ambulances. Do we need to keep always hiring paramedics?
Well, not, not necessarily. I mean, there were, there's no magic number for how many we should have, but, I mean, we should have enough that we, the ambulances, the two ambulances are always staffed, and now we have paramedics now that have been on long enough that they're getting promoted. It's not that they don't still ride the ambulances, but now there are offices on the piece too. So, with that, with the beginning of that came the idea of now we're trying, we want to put a paramedic in all the outstations. So, if we get a paramedic in every station, paramedics on the ambulances, and especially a minimum of staffing when A2 is only, has one person on it, one person that it shares with the engine, at least when they get to the outstation, excuse me, when they get to the ambulance call, that engine that also responded to that call, they can get their second paramedic for the transport from there. Is there a magic number? There isn't, but I personally would like to see at least 10 paramedics a shift, so that takes care of, keep making sure there's at least a paramedic in every station, the ambulance is taken care of, and with vacation time and personal health days and things like that, you still have a good complement of paramedics.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chief.
Sure, so I have a follow-up question. Are there changes you think are important in terms of, you know, the management structure, command staff of the department that you would consider proposing in the years to come?
Well, yeah, there is, I would like to see an assistant chief on the department. And I'm not looking for an assistant chief to do my work for me, and it won't even happen for me, but I would like to work on that while I'm, while I am the chief, because it's not gonna happen overnight. It has to be bargained. I mean, I have to bargain on not just, not just get the union on board, but I gotta get the town administration on board too. I mean, I don't know the exact way to do it. I'm not saying create a new position. I mean, there may be a way we can work from within and develop that position. But the main reason for an assistant chief isn't so much to do my work or take half the burden off of me, it's, it's for succession training. We don't have any training for the chief's position. There is nothing. You take a test or you take, go to an assessment center, and then you hope that if you get the job, then you're gonna learn it as you go. There's no, nowhere for us to do budget work. I mean, it's just, there's just nothing there for us, because all of our, you know, like, all the deputy chiefs, the four of them are either shift deputies and they're running the day-to-day things, or the administrative deputy is in charge of the ambulances, covering vacations of the, of the deputies. So, there's no real structure for, or opportunity for that, for any of the deputies to really learn the chief's position. So, instead of, you know, status quo going as we always went, you know, learning the job as you go, I would like to see a position developed that will, I mean, a position, whether we create it or we develop it from within, that will develop a person so that, you know, the town knows that this, here's, here's our next chief. You know, I mean, you guys can change the bylaw and have the, whatever, you know, have that, have that person, the person that goes to the assessment center and have the, have the people, the officers compete for the assistant chief's job that want that job, knowing that if they get that position, they're gonna be the next chief. And then they get on-the-job training and, you know, development and learn budgets and learn the day-to-day workings of the department that really nobody else is privileged to learn, because there's just no opportunity for it, there's no time for it.
Thank you. How can the fire department and the community benefit from strategic planning?
That's a tough one, only because strategic planning can work. I see it more in a, for the town, for the community, is only because, not that it can't work in the fire service, but town, but town-wide, you know, the department heads can work with the town administrator and develop a goal for the town to go in a certain direction, and they can work for their, you know, whether it's, you know, strategic planning from the present to the future or vice versa, they can work on it as a, you know, as a, as a town committee. The reason I say it's a little harder on the fire service is, we don't work every single, every, the department doesn't work every single day. They work shifts. So, on any given day, there's a different shift there. Other than, other than fire prevention, the day, the day-to-day workers, the Monday through Friday workers, fire prevention, training, captain, administrative deputy, and the chief, everybody else is on a shift. So, to get this to, and I'm not saying it, it can't work, I'm saying it's a little more involved, where you have to actually have people in the department that believe in it and truly wanna be part of the planning for the future of the department. So, they have to volunteer to be on this thing, because there's no way to have a meeting with the people that are involved, because they're probably, you know, the volunteers that are gonna wanna do this are on different shifts, and that's how, that's the only way I see that happening as a department. I'm not saying it can't happen, because I have people volunteering to be in all kinds of committees, but that's why I say it's a little more difficult, because, I mean, you want the people that wanna do it, because they gotta be committed to it, and they're gonna have to do a lot of it on their own time for these to have meetings and, and actually do the strategic planning.
What makes a fire chief successful?
I think, I think the fire chief has to listen. I think he has to listen to everything. He has to listen to everybody's side. I mean, he has the final say. The fire chief in Natick is still a strong chief, so he still has the final say in, in how the department goes, or, you know, in what direction we're headed. But he has to be open-minded and listen to everyone, everyone that has an idea. It's, I mean, you can't, you can't be close-minded, because there are times when, you know, you might hear something and it may not sound reasonable to you, but you gotta give the person a chance to voice his or her opinion, or, you know, try to sell their strategy. And I think if you're open-minded and you listen, the final decision is still yours, but if you, if you give, if you give the employees a chance to have a say in the department, and they know that they're at least, if they got an idea, you know, there's a chance, as long as I can run it by the chief, and you know, I give, there's a possibility that maybe it'll work. And I've learned a long time ago that I don't have the answer, all the answers to everything, and there are times when you think something doesn't sound right, and once it's explained to you. I mean, there may be some validity to it, even if it's not 100%, there might be a part of it you can use, and plus it gives everybody a sense that they have some say in how the department progresses.
Thank you. Describe a difficult decision that you've made as a leader and how you came to make that decision.
Well, the hottest decision I had to make recently was to take the chief's job. Does that count? 17 months ago, when, when this position came open, I, along with everybody else, really didn't want to do it, not, not because I didn't want to be chief as much as it didn't really fit in for my family and my, you know, my, the timing wasn't there for my lifestyle. My kids were home from school, it was summer vacation, it was only like the second week. And on my other schedule as a shift deputy, I was gonna be home most of the summer, so I was, you know, be home for my kids. My wife does work, so we had our summer planned, so we thought. But when, when it didn't look like anybody was gonna step up to the plate, I talked it over with my wife Laurie, and God bless her, she just said, "Look, doesn't matter, Rick, if you think you've gotta do this, do this, and we'll make it work." And the main reason was, I really didn't want an outsider coming in to run the department and to have to run, have to be the chief for the people. I mean, the citizens of Natick deserve somebody that knew the operation. And so, you know, the citizens always come first. And then my department came second. I mean, they, the men and women there deserve somebody that knew, knew them and knew how the, how we operate. And in the, the difficult time we, we were in at that, at that, during that period, they needed someone that understood what was going on and who they could come to and talk to, and, you know, it was, it was hard. It was very hard. It was very hard because I couldn't talk to my predecessor, because that was part of the rules, and I walked into that office with no direction and no one to turn to. So, that actually knew what was going on, I mean, so, and there's plenty, I had plenty of help department-wide, but none of us really knew what was going on and what was going on in the department. Like I say, there's no assistant chief, there's no, you know, the adminis, my, my executive assistant was fantastic. She was, just took over the job too. So, she was fairly new in, I mean, she was less than a year in the position and now knew is the executive assistant. So, so we kinda like had a fumble, fumbled through it together, but I mean, we, I'm very happy with the way things turned out. But that was a pretty, that was probably my most difficult decision in recent times.
Thank you. For how long would you seek to remain as Natick Fire Chief if you were appointed?
I would stay right till the state I would stay right till the state told me I had to leave. I don't, I mean, you, you all know. I mean, I'm three and a half years from 65, so I can only work the month of, that month I turn 65. I can finish that month out. And I even asked civil service. I thought, I was kinda hoping that that part of it was tied into the civil service part of it, but it's a state bylaw, state law. And they told me, "No, it's a, you know, it's a state law and you have to retire at 65." I have no intention of leaving sooner. I have no intention of sitting back and putting my feet up on the desk and letting the time just slip by. I truly will, you know, work hard and work to better my department and serve the town of Natick as, as the best of my ability and I have no intention of doing anything other than that.
Thank you. What's your view of the management-labor relationship in a fire department?
The relationship right now is very good. Being the former union president, I helped write that contract. I know it inside and out, probably almost as good as the union president. So, I know what guidelines I have to work under by, you know, management personnel-wise. There are ways to work anything out, memorandums of agreement, bargaining, but as long as, as long as I let the union have a voice, and I'm not saying the unions run the department. I don't want you to think that. There's nothing that says the, the chief and the union can't work together. My decision is still final, but there's no need to, there's no need to be adversarial. I mean, we can work things out, which we have done in the past 16 months. There have been issues that have come up, you know, the contract's already, is finished, the bargaining process is over at this time, so anything that has to be done now is either a side letter of agreement or memorandum of understanding. But this, this has been accomplished. There, you know, we have worked together through some, some issues. I'm proud to say that in six, 17 months, there hasn't been one grievance, even when, even when the union and I didn't see eye to eye on certain things, things were worked out, including disciplinary issues. So, I think, I think the department, I think the fire service, excuse me, I think my department, management and the union labor side, I think we can work things out without cost, costing the town money for lawyers and going to arbitration and hearings because we both step back sometimes. If, if something gets heated, we step back. Instead of making a knee-jerk reaction, we step back and then we'll, you know, take a break and come back at it. The union president and I might not see eye to eye 100% of the time, but we both have the same thing as the end result. The town of Natick and the citizens of Natick have to benefit from how we deal with each other. So, I personally feel that right now, this time, you know, the relationship is good. And, you know, I don't, I, I've learned a lot in my 29 years that go from, going from a reactive person to stepping back and hearing every side and just looking at things before I make a decision because those knee-jerk reactions usually don't work out.
Mr. Connolly?
I was just thinking, that's, that's good advice of me, but that's another story. Chief, so interested, 16 months, no grievances?
Sir.
Good for you. Thank you.
Mr. Rupperty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief White, how many chiefs have you worked under?
Interim chief Robert Morris hired me, Chief Reddett, Chief Bryan, Chief Sabourin, Chief Sheridan, and now me.
You, you've had an opportunity to see different management styles?
Absolutely.
And I'm sure you've learned from the various chiefs and...
Well, I think what I learned myself personally was when I became union president and Chief Reddett was the chief, that I think in our first meeting, we sat down and just discussed how we were gonna work together or not work together. And we came to the conclusion that, you know, that we both agreed to, if we're honest, if we're each honest with each other, no matter what, then there'll be no, no problems between us. Yes, we had disagreements. Yes, we, you know, had our differences. But when it was all said and done, I mean, we were, we were both honest with each other and it was business. So, once, however it was resolved, whether, you know, I went out or he went out, after we were done, it was over and we shook hands and went forward. It wasn't, there wasn't an adversarial atmosphere in the department at that time because we, we actually did work together. And, and I can remember on, on 9/11, I was working that day and the chief called me in the office and he says, he says, "Captain, we got a, we got a big problem here. We're gonna have to work together to make this work." They were worried about fueling, how much fuel we have, you know, we're not gonna be able to drive to stores to get dinner for the, you know, blah, blah, blah. We were work, trying to work out all the differences that were, just fell upon us that day. And I can remember the deputy chief's going, "Oh yeah, sure." He's talking to the union, but he ain't talking to us. But it wasn't that. It was more working together with him so that the, you know, the, the membership wasn't, wasn't feeling the brunt of what was coming down the road because of the uncertainty that was around us at that time. So, that's probably where I started to learn that the union and the chief can work together. And it doesn't mean that, you know, he's giving away any of his authority, but keeping dialogue open is, is, is just good for everybody, I think.
Mr. Janek?
Chief, what years were you president of the union?
I was president from 1999 to 2001.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, 2000, excuse me, to 2000. It was 99 to 2000, 2000, 2001, right, December to December. So, I got promoted to deputy in January of 2002. So, I couldn't run anymore. I couldn't run for a second term.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, the last question on our list, on this list, other members may. How would people describe you as a fire chief if you were appointed to be permanent chief of the department?
Are we talking about firefighters? Oh, okay.
Yeah, you don't have, there's not a stopwatch.
Okay. I think, and I hope, that the department would say I was fair. That I do, ever since I, ever since July of 2013, when I stepped into that office, I had, I've had, I've had an open-door policy and allowed firefighters to come in and talk about anything and everything. I mean, I learned a lot in the beginning months that, you know, chain of command is still gonna be followed and I learned that the hard way. But, but personal problems and personal issues where a firefighter had nowhere to turn, at least I, I gave him an, an open ear and tried to help them through whatever. That policy is still there now. But, but the fact that I did listen and I am fair. I think I'm very fair in my, even in my discipline, I think I've been fair. If it's been warranted, I mean, just the fact that nobody grieved any, which is their right to grieve, grieve a discipline every action. Where they didn't do that, I think they felt that the discipline fit the issue. So, I think fairness is probably my, my, maybe my biggest attribute, but, but that goes to the public too. I mean, public, people come just, you know, "Can I see the chief?" And they come in and I, I have an open ear for everyone. I have dealt with the public just as fairly as I've dealt with my department. I'm involved in a lot of town committees just because I'm the chief and I feel that I should be on certain committees. And, and I just think being involved and, and being a community, being a leader in the community and always having an open-door policy and an ear that'll listen, I think that, those are my best attributes as fire chief.
Thank you. Were members have other follow-up questions they'd like to ask? Mr. Janek?
Chief, excuse me, as, what do you think of the priorities of responsibility for a fire chief, especially in the community of Natick? A position of fire chief, what are your priorities?
Well, I think my priority number one is, is integrity. I think the people of Natick gotta feel that their chief is above reproach and above, above any kind of bad publicity. I think that if you just, if I just carry myself the way my parents raised me to be, I think that, I think that's very important to the position that people look up to the chief or think that he, his integrity is, is paramount and that he's the, you know, he, that he truly cares about his reputation or his position as chief. I don't think, I don't think that, I don't think that I can act otherwise. I think, I think the position demands that. And I hope that I've carried myself and gave, gave the impression of myself as being a man of integrity because I think that's very important. And I think it's, I think it goes without saying.
Thank you. Thanks. Chief, those are the board's questions. Is there anything, unless other members have anything they wanted to add? If not, then you've got the floor to offer any further remarks that you'd like to share with us, with the public?
Excuse me. I'd just like to say that I know there are people in town that think I deserve this job. And there are probably other people in town that think you guys owe this job to me. I don't feel that way at all. But I think in the last 17 months, I feel that, hopefully, that I've earned this job by doing the job the best I can and, and what I, how I've handled the position and, and led my department and through all the ups and downs of the past 17 months. And the fact that the department is doing, still doing a fantastic job serving the public of Natick. And I just hope that you, the board can consider my last 17 months as the fact that through that I've earned this position. Not that I'm owed it, but that I've earned it. And I truly will do this job for the next three and a half years if, if you so choose to appoint me chief.
Thank you very much for the time you spent with us. I'm sorry, Mr. Connolly, did you have something?
I'd be remiss if I didn't, chief. I knew your mom and dad and they were two of my favorite people. And they, I'm sure they love and are extremely proud of you. All Rick White has to be is Rick White. You're a class act.
Thank you, John.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Thank you.
No, no worries at all. Well said. Thank you, chief, for your interest in the position, certainly for the work that you've done as acting chief since July of 2013, interim chief, acting chief, I get the, but for the service to the community. It's a pleasure to know you and we'll, you'll hear from us on the first.
Great. You're welcome and thank you, thank you too. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I get two minutes?
Oh, sure, yeah, we have time.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Lintini, thank you very much for being here tonight. Congratulations on being one of the three finalists for chief of department.
Thank you.
It's been a long process. I applaud you for submitting an application and making it through to the stage. Speaks well of you. So, the board has about 10 questions. We may have follow-up questions. Members may have additional questions. We'll go through those in a moment. Just wanted to give you the opportunity to offer any introductory remarks. And at the end of the interview, you can make any closing remarks and either elaborate on anything that you may have said or that wasn't said that you want to fill in the gaps on your interview. So, with that, the floor is yours and welcome.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Mike Lintini, Natick Fire. Been with the department 24 years. Deputy chief for the last six. Love my job here in Natick. Born and raised in Natick. My wife and I have lived here for, in Natick for 28 years, 29 years now. And just happy to have this opportunity to follow possibly with the chief's job. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy. How has your career prepared you to lead the Natick Fire Department?
Starting off as a firefighter in 1990. Worked with Chief Reddett, went through the academy, promoted to lieutenant in 1994, and then captain in 2001. And those promotions involve a lot of studying. They, they involve training and they take a lot of work. So, those, those positions enabled me to develop a leadership and a management style that I think suited me well. It's worked very well for the department. The numerous training and college courses that I've taken have enabled me to learn better management leadership skills. And I've developed those skills over the years, especially as deputy chief, shift commander, incident commander. Taking on those roles as incident commander have really been able to, to give me the, the leadership role that I need. And through that, have, have really learned to be able to, to have the confidence to lead the department. And I think that that will serve me well as I move forward.
Thank you.
So, you said all the jobs that you've gone through have helped you develop a leadership and management style. Describe it. What is your management and leadership style?
Leadership style, I, I believe I would have to say for the most part is democratic. I, I'd like to bring everybody in when there is a problem to solve, get ideas, talk through things, develop a plan and, and move forward with that. There are times, obviously on the fire ground, where I have to be a dictator and I can do that and I make decisions when I need to do that. But I prefer a democratic style of leadership when it's possible to use it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. What challenges do you What challenges do you see for the fire department in the coming years? And how are your skills and experience suited to meet those challenges?
Challenges looking forward, I think quality EMS delivery is going to be a challenge. We are currently running at the paramedic level. We're currently running two ambulances, although one is not staffed fully. I think that's a challenge that we need to look at, is to try to get our A2 staff fully. We don't do that currently, and our A1 does about over 50% of our calls right now. So I think it's important that we move forward with, with developing a plan to staff A2 fully. We also have, our EMS training is going to be a challenge. We have enteroviruses, we have Ebola, we have situations like this where we need to protect ourselves and we need to protect the citizens of the town. And that's going to be a challenge in the future to take, take care of those issues. We also, we now have high-rise buildings in town, which we never had before. So fighting a high-rise fire is a whole new animal and something that we really need to move forward with extensive training and policies in order to handle those situations in high-rise buildings. Another challenge that I see and that we need to move forward with is technology. We, we are lacking in technology. We have no computers in any of the vehicles. I think that's something that we need to move forward with. I'd like to look into possibly equipping all the vehicles. Our software systems right now are adequate, but we could probably do better. So I see that as a challenge.
Go ahead.
Deputy, when you say software systems, are you talking about internal systems?
Correct. Our IMC reporting system.
Thank you. Management structure, do you see that as a, actually, I'll get to that. What would, how would you describe the best assets of the Natick Fire Department?
Best assets, right now, I would have to say, paramedic level service is outstanding. I think it's, it speaks to the, to the excellence of the department. The EMS delivery in this town is very good. Paramedic level service since 2001, when we implemented it, has, I found to be an excellent service. I think that's one of our greatest assets right now. The ability to deliver it with two ambulances, I think, is, is an asset. The firefighters in general are a great asset. They, they train well, they're knowledgeable, they love their job, and I think just the firefighters alone are a great asset to the town.
What changes would you prioritize for the department, such as apparatus, staffing, your leadership structure, and budgeting?
Changes that I foresee right at the moment, and the department right now is very well running and in pretty good shape, I would like to see a new station four. I know that there's been a lot of talk about building a new station four. I know there's some property available up in that area. We could build a new station, possibly on the current footprint, something that we can look into. I think I would love to be able to run our A2 from that location. I think it's, our engine four is a very busy engine. That area is very busy. We do a lot of ambulance calls from that area and love to see A2 run out of a West Natick Fire Station. The, as far as the management situation, I think an assistant chief may possibly be a way to go. That's something I'd like to look into. I don't know if it'll be beneficial. I think it would be. I would, I think it's something we need to explore. We do, we do have an assistant, deputy chief, an administrative deputy chief, excuse me, he takes some of those duties on now. Might be some way to roll that whole thing together and produce an assistant chief's job. I think that might be something that we'd like to look forward to for change. And other than, than that, I think it's just a technology change as far as moving forward with, with better technology.
Mr. Hughes.
Deputy, we currently seem to always hire new people to be paramedics, so that we don't have to train them to be paramedics on the department. Do we need to keep hiring paramedics only going forward?
Not necessarily. Right now, I think we're, we're on a target for, we have 20-man shifts. I think we're looking for about eight per shift, paramedics, right now. And I think once we reach that goal, we can hire non-paramedics. But if we can hire paramedics, I don't think it's a bad thing to do. One of the things that I would like to do is possibly move forward with an engine company paramedic level service, where our engine companies would be equipped with paramedic equipment. And in a situation like that, we would need more paramedics. So I'm, I'm not saying that it would be a bad thing to hire more paramedics.
Thank you.
How could the fire department and the community benefit from strategic planning?
Strategic planning benefits everyone. What it does is it sets, it sets goals and objectives for the department and for the town. By setting goals and objectives, you can, you can prioritize what's important and what's not important. And I think for the, for the most part, it benefits the, the department by, by knowing what, what we're going to be doing in the future and how we're going to be getting those resources we need for the future. It benefits the town greatly because the, the town in the, knows where those resources will be coming from, where we're going to allocate the resources.
Thank you. Deputy, what makes a fire chief successful?
I believe a successful fire chief is a fire chief whose department is successful. And I, by that, I mean that the, the satisfaction of the community, the satisfaction of the community from a standpoint of service, whether it be EMS or fire, fire prevention programs, other programs that we may have. And I think probably the biggest point of success for a fire chief is the success of his firefighters. If his firefighters are successful, then that means he's doing the right things. If a fire chief can empower his employees, give them the tools that they need to do the job, then I think that makes them successful. And if they're successful, then, then the chief is successful.
Thank you. Could you describe a difficult decision that you've had to make as a leader, and how you came to that decision?
A difficult decision that I've had to make? One is not coming to me immediately. I probably have to go back a few years to a call, I believe it was West Natick. I was up there with an engine company. I was a captain at the time. It was an ambulance call, and I had an employee that, that was not doing what he should have been doing on the call. And I had to take some disciplinary action on, at that call on the scene, which, which I didn't enjoy at the time. But that was probably the only thing I could, comes to mind immediately.
And so what, what led you to make that decision at the time?
Just the need to do it, to keep, just for the integrity of the call.
For how long would you seek to remain as Natick Fire Chief if you were appointed to this position?
I would be here for seven years probably at a minimum. Six to seven years.
Could you describe your view of the management labor relationship in the fire department?
I think it's a good relationship. We've worked very well. I've always seen, I've been part of the union for my career, whole career, and I've seen a good working relationship for the most part with the chief of the department. The, the union leadership is usually very reasonable. I don't see any problems working with them. I don't see any problems with, with the rank and file as far as being agreeable to anything that the, the chief usually puts forward. I think as long as the chief is cognizant of the collective bargaining agreement and honors the collective bargaining agreement, then I usually, I don't see that there's any problems with the, with the labor relations with the union.
So how would people describe you as a fire chief if you were appointed to this position?
I would say as a good leader, a strong leader, a leader with a good work ethic, who leads by example, a chief who gets things done, I think, might be one of the best things I could say. A chief who could, who will move the department forward and just, just create a, a culture of, of, of training and quality service that, that I think the town will be proud of.
Thank you. Mr. Connolly.
If I could, Deputy Chief Lintini, one-on-one, I wrote work ethics, which you had mentioned, and also, something I admire is that you would, you said you'd never ask anyone to do anything you wouldn't do yourself, which, from rolling hoes or sweeping, whatever it may be. So I found that very admirable as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeanette.
Deputy, what do you see as the primary role of a chief, fire chief, especially here in the town of Natick structure?
Mainly administrator. He, he's the guy who, who, he's the liaison between the troops and town hall. He's the guy who keeps, who makes the policy, sets the budget, and just makes sure that the apparatus is in order, that the, the, the training is, is, that's necessary is there, and generally, the, just the guy that takes care of all the business that, that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thanks. Do any other members have any follow-up questions? Then I would like to thank you very much. Congratulate you again on being a finalist. As you know, the board has on its agenda for December 1st, our discussion, deliberation, and vote, presumably, on a fire chief. But, you know, that will be the will of the board on December 1st for, you know, how we proceed from there. But in the meantime, I congratulate you. I thank you for your great service to the town. Congratulate you for being one of the finalists for chief of department.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Do you have anything you'd like to add in closing?
I would just like to thank the Board of Selectmen. I enjoyed the, the time we had to sit down and talk. I appreciate that time. And I want to thank the selection committee. I think they did a great job, and I really want to thank them. I'm sure they put a lot of time in. And I appreciate their, their, their work. And I appreciate your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. He's doing great. You don't have to run away so fast. We don't play.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Nick. Thank you. I got your message. Thank you. That's okay. Look up. Thank you, Michael.
So before we adjourn the meeting, I just wanted to ask members just to stick around for a minute so we can schedule a meeting for the week of the 8th, potentially the 9th or 10th, just to have, and, you know, a couple-hour meeting and discuss progress on our goals for the current fiscal year and just where we go and what our priorities are for the six months to come. So if folks just have a minute to compare calendars and just see what night might work best, that would be great. Anyone?
Because of something I'm doing in a way I'm going to be able to do anything.
An evening? Not even an evening meeting. So maybe we'd look at the 4th, if that works. Do folks happen to know their calendars?
Mr. Chair, if I could, is this in addition to or instead of retreat?
It is the retreat, basically.
Originally, we were talking?
Oh, we do one of those like in the spring or summer.
Wasn't there something on the 9th, December 9th?
That was what I was thinking of, but that was before Mr. Hughes mentioned that work obligation that was going to make it practical to do that. So we have a regular meeting on the 1st, so I'm suggesting perhaps on Thursday, the 4th, if, if that could work.
I could do that.
I have selectmen hours here at the town hall at 6:30.
Well, I think that works beautifully. I'm not saying it's ideal.
Pretty of the 7:30, right?
Yes. I'm not saying 6:30 is ideal, but if we got, if we started like at 5:30 or so, I mean, I don't envision this taking a long time. I'm thinking like an hour would be fine. Would that work for folks, 5:30 to 6:30?
Yes.
I can do that.
Okay.
I mean, you know me, I'm willing to have a four-hour meeting.
I know you are.
But I do not want a rebellion.
Then can the rest of us begin to speak?
Exactly. All right, so let's schedule a meeting for 5:30 on Thursday, December 4th. And unless anyone else has any announcements or, I'm sorry? Yes, good, yes, I'm sorry. I should not have assumed. Can, can you be there? Thursday, December 4th?
What time again?
5:30 to 6:30? There's, there's nothing like deadlines to focus our minds.
Buy for 5 o'clock? Charlie, is that possible for you?
No, I can't do it.
No?
Yeah. Yeah. It's all right. 5:30 is great.
5:30 it is.
Good. Okay. Is, we'll do, oh, yeah, it's, it's, the idea is a mid-year goals retreat. Just talk about our goals and priorities for the current year. So we may do it here, we may do it at library, we'll, we'll get a place, but someplace close to town hall, so that whoever has office hours can scoot back. So before we close, I would just like to thank the entire screening committee, represented here by Cass Felides, for their great work getting us to this point. You guys put in, men and women, put in an extraordinary amount of time in service to the town, and it's very praiseworthy. So I'm thanking you all in general, but you in particular, so. For the benefit of the public, folks are saying it's a good team. So I want to just thank you and the rest of the board for this great process. We'll reconvene on December 1st. Is there a motion?
We adjourn.
Any other motions, discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you all.